Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have to let both of office.
I give it to you first, right? Which right hand?
I, Victoria Handy.
Victoria Handy.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
District clerk of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
District clerk of Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
Oh, according to my bill.
According to the best of my.
She knows more than I do. Thank you.
You!
I, Catherine Barbara Grace. I, Catherine Barbara Grace, do solemnly swear to. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. To support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of. The duties of superintendent of Sag Harbor Union Free School District. According to the best of my ability. I will do the swearing in of the newly elected members. I do Chris Teis. Were you elected?
I, Chris Teis. I, Chris Teis, do solemnly swear that. Do solemnly swear that. I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of. Board of Education member of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District. Board Education member of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District. District clerk. According to.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability, same.
I have your votes, our newly elected board member. Just be after me. Hi, your votes are here.
Hi, your votes are here.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Board of Education member of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
Board of Education member of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, your votes, you can take a seat.
So, at this time, even though it's not on the agenda, I spoke to our school attorney today. He has another board meeting that starts in a little bit. He's agreed to take a phone call from us for a few minutes right now. So, I'd like to make a motion that we reconvene to executive session to discuss items with our school attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. We'll just. Can I get a motion to reconvene from executive session?
Second.
All those in favor? Do you vote? It's unanimous.
Are we voting online?
Yes, I'll just do it.
All right, at this point, we are in the election of the officers. And I do believe that is run by the district clerk, correct?
So, can I have a motion to elect a president of the school board?
I nominate Jordana.
Second.
Second by Susan. Is there any other nominations for president? Okay, can I have a vote to elect Jordana as president?
Thank you all very much. I, so I have to ask if there are any nominations. Okay, are there any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Alex.
Second.
Can I get a second? Oh, you second? Okay.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor? All opposed? Any objections?
We all change seats now.
Seems very excited.
I am so excited!
So, where does the VP sit there? I stay where I am or I remember?
You stay where you are. I'll pick Alex's seat. Alex, you're gonna.
I'm moving. Where do you want me?
You're gonna take Jordana's seat.
Okay.
And then she will put together a seating chart for the next.
I'll take my charger.
Congratulations, team.
Just take it down a half or two.
Hello, honey girl.
Hi! So, how are you?
I would like to thank both of you for stepping up and being willing to serve. It takes a lot of time and energy, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And yes, it does take a lot of time. More so than I realized. But I'm excited and I look forward to all of us working really collaboratively as a team. And for Diana, you know, these are big shoes to fill.
Yes, thank you, Diana.
And, but I know you're going to continue to be actively involved.
Absolutely, anything you need.
We're going to be an awesome team, guys.
I just want to acknowledge Diana, all the work that you've done first as being president and then reluctantly taking it back over again. It's been enormous amount of time and you are a great asset to this school district. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alex.
I want to thank both of you for being willing to do this. I really, really appreciate it.
So, shall we move into public input one? Is there anybody that would like to speak at public input one?
Are you?
Yep, you can step up there, state your name, anything else you need to state. You have three minutes to.
Hi, how are you? My name is Michael Daley. I'm a North Haven resident and I do not have any students in the school. But my boys have been here with me over the years and slay ride on the hill. My boys actually graduated from Belleport School. And had the, you know, after going to, growing up and going to West Hampton Beach School and Remsenberg School and Eastport School, their mom made the wise choice of marrying her second husband. And he lived in the Belleport School District and they went to Belleport. And being a little Irish Catholic white man, when I heard they were going to Belleport, I was like, oh, my God. You're kidding. They've been in all these nice little lily-white schools their whole lives. And here they are going to Belleport, which had a reputation of being a tough school. And now my boys are 27, 29, and 31. And recently, at my son's wedding, my oldest boy's wedding, the boys and I were sitting around and they said, "You know, Dad, we're really glad that we had the chance to go to school in a place that had a lot of diversity." "We feel like it set us up and it prepared us more for what the real world is when we got out of school." And they learned how to deal with people of culture and people of color who were in their position of responsibility with their teachers and their coaches. And two of the three of them really excelled in Belleport. One at basketball, one at football, another one at basketball, and the third one just kind of got through it, you know? But the point that I want to make tonight is I think that we've had a great run with Katie as our superintendent. But I think that there's also an opportunity now that you're going to be picking a new superintendent to really look seriously at walking the talk on diversity and inclusion and in seeking potential candidates who may represent diverse, a diverse background. I actually put together, and I'm sorry, I only have six of them, but can I hand these to somebody so that you can?
And I'll make copies too.
Take a look at them? Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to look at mine. And then, and what I have for you, I've just given you a little toolkit because I think that my three minutes will be up before I could go through this. Talks about teacher demographics on Long Island and that minorities account for about 45% of public school students on Long Island. But there's just a little more than 8% of teaching staff on Long Island are considered minorities. It talks, I was able to find, and I'm not going to read these figures because they're, you know, one or two years old, about the students that are in Sag Harbor as well as the makeup of the teachers. And while, you know, I'm also a real estate agent and I deal with people all the time who are buying homes in Sag Harbor and are renting homes in Sag Harbor so their kids can go to Sag Harbor. Because I think it's no secret that Sag Harbor has become a white flight school. And that's arguable. But compared to, you'll see also in here, figures for Southampton, Bridgehampton, and East Hampton. And then along with this package is a little bit of a toolkit for you should you decide that you really want to delve into diversity in this search for a new superintendent and for actually even more teachers. And that is a toolkit provided from Erase Racism, which is a, an organization on Long Island which has a very, very robust educational program around diversity. I recently attended their annual event and met Dr. Lorna Lewis, who is currently the superintendent of schools in the Plainview Old Bethpage CSD. And she's a very, very bright, well-spoken leader in diversity within education, within the education ranks. So, there's some tools in here should you decide that, you know, Erase Racism even has a board, an education job opportunity board on their website that people can go to. So, I would, again, I, I think we owe it to our kids to set them up for a life that they're going to lead after they leave school. And I would encourage you to very seriously consider hiring more teachers with, who represent diversity and searching for a superintendent. And then I've got plenty more to say, but we'll talk about that later, about the unified Bridgehampton Sag Harbor School District. But that's for another day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Hi, my name's Emily White-Smucklin. I have two daughters in Sag Harbor Schools. One is going to be starting fifth grade and the other is going to be starting kindergarten. Very excited to have them both at Sag Harbor Elementary next year. And I really want to echo what Michael said mostly. You know, I think this is an amazing opportunity with, I believe it's five positions open right now, including the superintendent, to really consider diversity and inclusion in our decision-making process. And to, you know, I think it's important to note that this isn't just something that we should do out of the goodness of our heart for people who fall under the umbrella of diversity, but for all of our children, I think it is crucial for them to see people of color in positions of power, to see their friends, you know, seeing people who look like them in positions of power. And I think it's just a really important lesson for them, not only in terms of empathy and compassion, of course, but also just in terms of reality and learning how to be successful in this world which is getting more diverse every day. So, thank you all, and I hope you will consider diversity and inclusion in this process.
Is there anyone else at public input one?
First of all, I want to congratulate the families in the class of 2019.
Go ahead and tell us your name too.
Tonight, it's Tom Mack. I watched live streaming the graduation, so, but it was really striking. It was hot. But at the same time, you know, you can't help it. What Carl Bernstein's message was, was brilliant. Because he said so eloquently what I feel, especially about rock and roll. How we changed, how we changed the world. We stopped the Vietnam War, women's rights, it goes right down the list. And we changed the world. He's challenging these kids to push back a little bit, but not too much, you know? So, I thought it was really cool. So, from the custodial staff to the clerks, to the administration, the teachers, now, just everybody has a part in these kids' success. And they're going on, they are going on an adventure. So, I'm really, really proud of that. I came here tonight because I just wanted to congratulate my running mates that I ran, like Chris, your guess. Diane, it was, you know what? I never felt like I was running against anybody. I thought we were running with each other. And Alex, you said, "I'm not voting for you, but I like you a lot." But it was just, it was, it was an honor. And it's, I really got to meet new people. Being a native here, it's amazing how many people I don't know when I go to pick up my grandchildren at the elementary school. So, I could talk about diversity all night too, but that's another topic. But I just wanted to thank you and I just want to hold you accountable to what you said about transparency. And I think there's a lesson here for us as a community that, Chris, I'm really proud of you. You got pushed back, borderline disrespected, and people came after you and you took the vote. You took it hard. The community spoke. Don't stop what you're doing. And I don't care if anybody in this board doesn't like each other. That's, that's not a problem for me. It's about respect. It's totally about respect. And job well done, Diane. Congratulations. Job well done. And I just wanted to say thank you. And I'm looking forward to giving back in different ways to our school because I really love my community. So, thank you so much.
Hello. Drew Harvey, once again. Katie, appreciate the work putting this together with the timeline. Question that I would just like to have answered is when the board would be willing to vote on this project so we can proceed into this timeline that Katie has proposed. I don't know if that's possible tonight or if not. Definitely the next meeting. From our standpoint, we'd like to see that vote happen. Or we unfortunately will start to look to other areas for the project. Then just in terms to speak to one of the bullet points, the $7,500 to $12,000. If that comes up in that discussion, we have licensed professionals, we have architects involved with our nonprofit organization that could provide drawings, three-dimensional renderings, anything that's necessary on that front to alleviate those costs to the district. Yeah, we'd like to see you guys accept this donation of the project that we proposed last, I guess, two weeks ago with the Mike Semper's memorial. We want to see it put up at the school. And we'd really like to just see that vote happen so we know that the school board is in support of this project. So, we can start then to knock down the actual goals to get it up and get it in the ground. Because we don't want to see it kind of pushed off or remain in a state of purgatory, you know, and not really have anything done to actually take the next steps. Materials are purchased, drawings can be made in 24 hours. We'd love to speak to the school architect. We have architects at our end. They can easily speak, sign off on drawings. That would be safe. We provide a safe ground material if that comes into play. So, any obstacles that the school board may foresee, like know that we would handle all those in the proper way. Liability would be covered, more than enough, in my opinion, for the school board to make a decision whether it be yes or no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to superintendent's report.
I think the first up is our diversity and inclusion, which is being presented by Joan Dudley. And, oh, Rebecca, that's right. So, and we, and if you would also introduce any other committee members that are here tonight to attend, okay. So, Rebecca Burnside and Joan Dudley. This is the most devoted committee, other than my policy committee, I'm going to give. We're going to be neck and neck on that one. But this is a very active, very hard-working committee that I co-chair with Betty Reynosos, who couldn't be here tonight, so two of the committee members and collaborated. I think there was probably eight or nine people collaborating just on this committee report. And our last meeting was so active that they said, "We've got to give the board an update." I said, "It's the real meeting." And they're like, "Yeah." They don't take no for an answer, so here they are.
Okay, would I mention Betty?
Yes.
Is also in the room. She's done incredible, getting all our documentation.
I'm thinking of Betty, but she means Bobby.
Bobby.
Bobby Kowal.
So, we start off with the mission statement. I'm sure there are many people around who have not seen this mission statement. But if you pay attention to the mission statement, you'll notice we talk about responsible and respectful members of a global society, which means this is our promise to our students. When you look at our mission statements, it's a statement of diversity and inclusion. And so, our committee wants the school board and the school district to include this mission statement in everything that we do. Anything that leaves this building, in our hallways, how we interact with people in and out. Because it's an incredible statement which was put together by this community a couple of years ago. I know it goes out on some of our correspondence, but many people have not seen it and it's an incredible statement. Also, the committee is also working on a diversity and inclusion vision statement for the district. We want people to look at Sag Harbor District and say, you know, what is your diversity and inclusion commitment? And we have, we want to have a statement to stand behind that commitment. So, just for some thought, and this is a slide from Betty Rosa, the region's chancellor for New York. And in that statement, you can see, she talks about leveling the playing field for all our students. And researching the education sector shows that diversity and inclusion is very important to the success of organizations. And so, as a school district, diversity and inclusion has to become a very important aspect of our curriculum and our, and of our everyday interactions. We believe an inclusive culture inspires us to try new things, speak openly, and brings us together in ways that make us stand out. And we want to just honor that statement. You've probably seen that this is our why. This is a why. Why are we doing this? And, you know, just English as a second language, people of color, the LGBTQ community, and we had this slide up before. But our why is more than this. Which just shows that racial diversity and inclusive practices in school benefit all students. And one of the issues that comes up time and time again is during the college application process. Colleges are now asking, "What do you bring to my community?" It's not about you. It's what do you bring as a student? And I think we can no longer graduate students out of Sag Harbor without having some sort of interaction in diversity and inclusion. I know for my daughter, her first week at school, she had to take a diversity and inclusion course. And also, attend every college that accepted her, she had to attend a diversity and inclusion weekend as part of the commitment. And this is just not how colleges, but this is a growing trend around the country. Every college is requiring students to have, to take courses in diversity and inclusion. It's about what you bring to the college. It's not about growing up in Sag Harbor and, you know, having this great life in Sag Harbor and going off to college. It's about a little more than that and we need to ensure that our students get this.
In the corporate world as well, I mean, it's a, in, in most corporations now, diversity and inclusion training is, is part of, you know, everyday life.
For the top 50 companies, top 100, it's 100% training. Everybody gets trained on diversity and inclusion. For two, or eight to nine school year, there are a couple of things that the committee accomplished. We created subcommittees, three subcommittees, because it's a lot of work. There's a lot of moving, heavy moving to get done. And so, we broke up our group into three committees, the diversity and inclusion classroom libraries. So, I can be working with John Jermaine Library and they're looking to give us classroom books. And I think it's the, yeah, John Jermaine Library.
Yes, yes.
The second part, which I fell into this one, researching staff conferences, professional development, and student workshop. And then the third part is film research presentation, which is in cooperation with John Jermaine Library. And Bobby is part of that working group. And we had our first screening. We had our first screening, Misrepresentation. And Misrepresentation is a documentary film which highlights the struggle of women and what they go through every day. It explores how mainstream media contributes to the under-representation of women in influential positions. And we actually had three past Pearson students come in and talk to us about their experiences at school, at Pearson, and what they're experiencing now in college. And it happens that two of them were in the media, film and media. So, they were also talking about how, what changes are taking place and how it's impacting the women and what needs to happen. And we did have a full house, so we're looking to do more of this. And I think we have, every other month, we'll be screening a movie. And we're looking for the community to come out and support those films. Okay, like I said earlier, for 2019, 2020, our mission statements really important to us in English and Spanish. And trust me, we pulled our letterhead together and we already incorporated Spanish and English on the letterhead just to see what it looks like. And so, that will be an ongoing project this, this year.
May I, on the bottom of the letterhead, you would have, it would, rather than, I feel, I don't know if anyone else feels this way, but often our print is you have to flip over the page or go to another page for Spanish. But on the bottom, there would be just a line in the middle, it would be in English and in Spanish on the bottom of the page. Bilingual. So bilingual.
In August, we have, again, we had professional development. We introduced, last October, we had a speaker come in. And this year, we're continuing with our professional development. We have a group that's coming in. The workshop is educational equity through cultural proficiency. And all our new and newer teachers, you know how to describe that, will be in on that August training. But we have an incredible keynote speaker, Mr. Oliver Robinson, who is the superintendent of a all-white school district in Shinnidora, New York. And he was also voted Superintendent of the Year. And we're bringing him in to speak to our community also. We want to have him in the community. Because oftentimes, you know, these things go hand in hand. It's a small community. We talk about making diversity and inclusion changes at school. It has to be translated into the community. So we're looking for community support. And he, I've had the opportunity to listen to him. He's an incredible speaker. He tells you exactly how to do it. And we have no excuses when a school that's very similar to us, all-white, can make those changes and have an incredible diversity and inclusion program. And then we have superintendent conference in November. We're having another workshop for all staff and faculty. So we want to continue this annually. We want to make sure that our teachers, our administrators, our employees, anybody who face the public or students, whatever we do, we speak the same language of diversity and inclusion. Also, the report card, we worked on the menu for the teachers with comments in English and Spanish. And that's ongoing. It's more of a lengthy process. There are about 279 comments that teachers can choose from, and some of them make no sense, so.
Different word for the same thing.
Yeah. You can say, you know, excellent in like 10 different ways. And so now we have to narrow it down, look at the teachers and really get that out. So hopefully, we can have it done by our first report marking period this year. Anything, we think that is super important, again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but incorporating diversity and inclusion in everything that we do, programming, hiring practices, our policies. We just have to do everything through the lens of diversity and inclusion. And this is one of our recommendations for 2010, 2020, 2019, 2010. We also are working on inclusion training for students and community. There are great programs out there. And we have partnerships, local partnerships. For example, in the past, we had Eastville and the Underground Railroad. So we're looking at how we partner again with Eastville. Sylvester Manor, ensuring that our trips that our kids take include some sort of historical talk, something diverse. So we're just not going into New York City to the wax museum, but let's find something a little more interesting. We're also planning, you know, Black History Month. And also working with the different organizations and groups out here, who oftentimes bring in groups and have shows and events, but we find out about them in, you know, often the day before, two days before. So we're gonna try and work as a community to have these gates and pull this information so we can get our students out there, so we can have them, you know, looking at diverse films, dances, whatever it is that's happening. And again, we need parent support, community support to get that going. Finally, our recommendations to the board. Again, broken record. We're saving again all our decisions for upcoming school year. We would like diversity and inclusion to be part of it. And we're talking about also an inclusive governance start list. We want to have diversity and inclusion embedded into all board processes. So it's not just the school, but the school board, because our school board manages. And so from every organization who has a diversity and inclusion program or any successful organization starts from the top down. So this is affecting also our board event. And we will hope everyone will come to work there. Next one was DuckTil.
Yes, we're hoping to purchase a program for the elementary school. It's called Toolbox by a company, DuckTil Learning, based out of California. It's all research-derived. It's a, it's a social, emotional program for curriculum for students. And it would be implemented for the entire elementary school, K through five. They would each get more or less a personal toolbox. And an example is if they're having a feeling, if they feel bullied, it gives them, you know, a card that it's tangible that they can look at and it gives them something they can do or, you know, it's a toolbox for, you know, if they're feeling left out, if, if they feel like they've done something and they've heard a friend's feelings. It helps teach them how to, know how to walk up to that friend and apologize and take accountability. It just, it's a very important tool, and its research is showing more and more that this is what companies hiring, this is what they want in their future. And it would provide it for the whole school. It also gives teachers a toolbox so they're, they're implementing it in the classroom and the students have their individual. It's also, they also send home resources to parents. It's been working tremendously well in all the different schools that it's been in, backed up. I don't know if anyone was at the presentation last year when we had the development speaker come in, in, was it September, Katie?
October.
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 The superintendent's, the presenter introduced it to all the faculty. And I know it really resonated with a lot of people, and when I watched it, it resonated. So the PTA kind of got on this mission to try and raise money for it. And I believe we have half the funding, but it would be a wonderful program for the school.
And the single most important agenda item for us for this new school year is the superintendent search. We want to make sure that diversity and inclusion strategy is imperative on the board's agenda for the search. We want questions, specific questions on diversity and inclusion to be asked by the search firm. We want our new, we want the search, the questions to be embedded in diversity and inclusion, but also we want this person to have that sort of experience to embed diversity and inclusion into curriculum. Because if we're moving in that direction, we need somebody who can do that. And we need to be, we need to have a voice. And diversity and inclusion would like the board to consider, well, not consider, we're making a recommendation, that the board take on our questions to the search firm. Because it's imperative that the work that we have done, very slow, very precise, that we do not lose that. And that's our, our biggest challenge for the new school year. I'm gonna hand out a playbook, which is from the New York State superintendent. And this playbook gives you a rule on how to go about doing it, how to hire diverse workforce. It's not something that we have created. It's been done. It's out there and it's very precise. Your checklist of things that we can, we can do. That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. In the superintendent's contract, it says that she will provide to the Board of Education, how the two names are, goals for the upcoming school year by July 15. So I know that you have planned an upcoming, you know, board meeting or board workshop to discuss this, but I thought I would give you some recommendations to sort of begin that process because we do have established goals from the last two years that have been, I think, ongoing. And these are just my recommendations for the board to look over. And I did embed goals and tasks such as work with school leadership to find an exceptional leader, meaning Sag Harbor School's specific characteristics identified by stakeholder groups in the school and community, effectively communicate the search process and expectations, and develop and implement a transition plan to ensure the success of the new superintendent. I directly stole that from 2013, 2014, and 2013, 12 and 2013, because the Board of Education had that for two years while they had an interim. And that had been in their board goals. So I cut and pasted that, did a little wordsmithing, but if there's any concern about plagiarism, I wanted to let you know that, yes, I had in fact taken that right from the board goals from a few years ago because I thought that the board took on that task a few years ago and did a good job back in that, at that time of communicating to the community and letting the community know that there was going to be surveys and that each stakeholder group would have an opportunity to, you know, take surveys and complete surveys and then get that information back. So I put that down as what I think is going to be a monumental goal and task for the Board of Education. Then I took the existing goals that we have and I put a blue slash through things that I believe when the board reflects on it have been either accomplished or will be things that the board may want to continue to monitor or continue to support and expand. Again, this is really just, and it goes on to the back page as well, with things that I think we can take a blue marker through that hopefully by the end of the summer, some of those things will have happened or will have, have already been successfully completed. So again, this is just for the board to use as a kind of jumping off point. So I didn't know if there was any questions or anything about that, but I just thought that would give you a good start for where you have to go from here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just note that there is a line item about diversity and inclusion already in here. So hopefully you guys will consider coming to the goals workshop when we hold it.
Oh, that's, we were meant to say that. We'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Thanks, everybody.
Um, just another, and, you know, I just wanted, I had made up this slide, those in every year when we do that, Welcome Back to School, that, that these are the committees that the Board of Education has. So we request volunteers, that the Board of Education has already established a deadline for September 9. This will go out in the Welcome Back that we send back fairly early. But I also, I'm gonna hand that one off to you if there's anything further you want to. But we do funnel it all through our district clerk, but there is the audit committee. We're always looking for new members. The existing committee chairs over the summer will reach out to their membership to see if they still want to be members. And that information will also be provided to the board president. And so that you can find out, you know, what the levels are for that going up and down, for that, the membership for each of those committees moving forward. And again, we'll have that, and so this will also hang on the website.
Pardon me, a question about that. I don't see any reference to the shared decision-making committee or the building level shared decision-making committees. At what point do you reach out to the community to ask them to volunteer for those committees?
This goes out to everybody in the community that says the shared decision-making committees for high school, middle school, and elementary. The only thing we have is.
There's a district one that's, I thought the district one's legally required.
No, no.
It's not. So we're not gonna have it.
But I do, we do need to, we do need to make it, I'll have that for the next.
We have to deal with the board on that one.
Yeah.
We just need to update the, I guess, the charter, or there's something that has to be.
Yeah, all the shared decision-making are all embedded together, and there is district language that I have, I have to do the editing for for the board. So I have to do that.
We should have a conversation this year whether it is a recommendation to have a district level shared decision-making or not, right? Some years we've had it, some years we've haven't, but that would be a discussion we would have as a board.
I believe that the board had, had a recommendation for that, and because it wasn't mandated, they made that decision, asked me to make those edits on it.
I'm sorry. I know that was like a year ago. What I'm saying is for the coming school year, I didn't know if it would be proper to have that conversation again, just to see if it could perform or if it didn't. That's all.
Okay. All right. Okay, so that was just an update.
And thank you to everybody who served on all the committees this past year. And board members, obviously, we're gonna have to reshuffle some of the committee assignments. So if there's anything in particular, any committees you want to serve on in particular, please email me. Some of you have already emailed me some of your preferences, and we can adjust things accordingly. And then just a reminder that the audit committee is the only committee that's required by law and that it's encouraged for all board members to join if you're willing. And it is subject to the open meetings law regardless of whether there's a forum or not. So, you know, everyone should want to share anything that they want with that committee. You shouldn't hesitate to join or come to those audit committees.
We had several committees that were really late starting last year, and it just happens every year. But I just encourage us to reach out often to the community as early as possible so that we can be more, even more productive next year through some of the committees that were just late starters.
And I think the charters now run.
Year-round.
Year-round. They're, we rewrote the charters that they're like, they're year-round committees so that they can operate, like for instance, policy will run all summer long. Because we have worked to go, staying on policy, right? The last one, Drew Harvey isn't with us any longer, but I gave him this update. So that's what he talked about in Public Input One, is the potential progress for the installation of the memorial outdoor fitness equipment. I was speaking with school architects on what this would look like. They are good enough to take time away from all the work we're doing around the Sag Harbor Learning Center to provide information for the Board of Education. The memorial would not have to be reviewed by New York State Department of Education since it's site work only. The district would, would have an RFP. They could do a request for proposals, or they could do a public bid if they wanted more competitive pricing versus an RFP. Due to the fact that, this is coming from the architects, they would need to develop drawings only. The specifications of the drawings, a project manual would not be needed. So it doesn't have to get that deep into it. So again, the question of the RFP or a public bid, a public bid might take a little bit longer, but would be more competitive. Based on the location discussed, which is on the middle school, high school grassy area by the cafeteria, they do not anticipate any major grading, but they, but it has to be resurfaced because it would be a play area. So it would have to be designed, engineered, because children fall off of these things, these items, and they have to have an engineered surface that, that would capture their falls. The surfacing recommendation, due to the prevalence everywhere else in the middle school, high school, is wood mulch. That's what we use over at the elementary school. That's what we use at here at the middle school, high school. So there's other options they can discuss, but that's generally what's used, which for the top, very top of the surfacing. They also anticipate the three-dimensional graphics would be needed to verify the final design. And then the anticipated timeline would be as follows, that the work could start immediately with district authorization, and that would include the architects doing a design engineer for the site and construction documentation that they would provide for either the RFP or the bidding. They expect that related design and engineering of the subsurface underneath the play area would be 7,500 to 12,000. Then the construction contract procurement would be two weeks. Request for quotes, public bidding would be a little bit longer, maybe two weeks longer. They can't provide any estimates on the construction costs for the, for that fall zone that's included. That's where they have to engineer would be the fall zone. And then they think the construction would be fairly quick. It would be one to two weeks. And then this was just their original, or what they would say was the area that would have to be engineered. So under the parallel. So under the parallel bars in that area. So that's where we are.
So what's the next step on this? It's okay. Do we have a public discussion tonight so that you can get the will of the board if we want to proceed? Or how do we kind of, you know, logistically move through this opportunity?
Well, I, one of the things that our attorney has kind of cautioned, and I know that our insurance company would also caution is that the work be done by school-based architects, our school-based architects, because it's very specific what twelve-year-olds do. So even though it's very generous of them to offer that they have architects, could they send their designs over? Our insurance company's going to go, no.
Why can't our architects review the designs to save time? Because I think that was a crazy number they gave us.
Well, um-
They're still reviewing it, we're just not asking them to do the initial work, that's the cost.
I think that what, where the problem comes in is one to two years down the line, the child gets hurt, and they're going to say, were those, were the designs done in fact by a school architect?
No, they would review them, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think our architects would ever take that into consideration.
I would like them to be asked.
Okay.
That's just my question. New York State Architects are New York State Architects. They spent, I know they are specific to schools. But if they're reviewing a plan by another architect, you know, just because they're not doing the CAD drawings and the sketching to save time and money for a donation, they can still sign off on the project.
I can ask.
Okay, thanks.
So what are, what is the, it's a process question. What's the process for us to have the discussion of whether we proceed with this or not? Because I know our next meeting is at the end of August, right? And so we've got almost two months between now and then. So tonight is the process that we discuss it as a board and decide if we want to move forward? I would suggest that, because I would hate to wait till the end of August to have that discussion. It would seem like, particularly because it's work in the back, that if the board does want to proceed, because summertime's a great time to do it when the kids aren't out there during construction.
I think ultimately it might make sense for you, Jordana, to get the will of the board if we even want to entertain the idea. Because I didn't do that when it came and spoke last time. The first time that this was even presented to us was last time. So if there is interest from the board to move forward with the project, I think ultimately if we have the will of the board, there might be an understanding that, you know, at some point down the road we might need to approve some things that require some funding or things like that. But as far as like moving forward with, like, let's get the ball rolling, let's, we're all interested in this. Even if it does cost us twelve thousand dollars, it's something we would all vote for. I think just getting the general sense from everybody if this will probably feel bad, it might be a logical step.
Yeah, let's do that, or we can even, I mean, we can not even get the will of the board. We can vote, it's not really substantive vote on anything. No, we're not voting to expend dollars right now. We're just voting to move forward with the idea to, and to explore next steps. And-
I'm interested in exploring the next step and moving forward.
Now, I, one of, one question I think would be good to get some discussion on is, obviously, if it does cost that amount of money to seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars.
Can we go back one slide or do we have the information we can ask?
Sure. Is that, do we have any sense, is that, you know, I know Drew and Nico have been raising money for this. Is that something that they're going to donate those costs? Or has there been any discussion, or is that something that we now need to explore? Or how do we, if we have budgeted this amount for next year, what would the plan be to? If it costs that and we want to move forward with it, what's the plan to kind of expend those monies in the end?
Well, there'd be two costs. There'd be the, the design engineering costs. And then there would be the related construction costs. So there'd be, there'd be two costs. You know, I don't think they have any fundraising plans right now. Because I, we just spoke about that prior to the meeting. I don't think they have any fundraising. I think their, their plan right now is to try and get that, you know, the work donated.
But those costs are, if we use, if you're using school state-approved engineers, correct? Not what Brian had asked us to take a look at, do you see that if we could possibly look at that?
Right, so that's kind of worst case, that's worst-case scenario, right?
And then there are the construction costs. The installation can't be volunteered, as you said. So we would have to pay for installation and the flooring, right? There's a specific flooring. We don't know what those costs are yet. So it's hard to say that we authorize it without knowing what the costs are. But, you know, I think it's a project that is, seems to be very valuable for many, many reasons. And considering how much it costs to put a playground in, and Matt Malone knows this very well, you know, because we did this several years ago. And any kind of equipment, we have very limited equipment in our backyard for our middle and high school students. We have a dwarf-sized basketball court and a green field. And that's about it, right? There's not, you know, you go to other high schools and you see parkour courses, you see all sorts of stuff that kids can do and engage when they're outside. We have almost nothing. So it actually seems to solve, you know, it's an opportunity that almost solves a problem we have back there. So I, and never mind kind of the emotional and spiritual part of this, which I think is beautiful and important. So, you know, I would hope that we can find a way to move forward on this because I think it would be very valuable to our community and our students.
I agree with everything Chris just said. I mean, these are probably the kind of worst-case scenario sort of cause. So if everybody wants to do this, couldn't we make a decision tonight to move forward? And then we just find a way to do it as quickly and as cost-effectively?
You can almost look at it, one way to consider it is it's sort of like the school district's in-kind costs. So like when we do grants and things like that, we offer space and we offer use of the phone lines. And so they've given their part, the school district does their part, and-
But couldn't we vote tonight to just move forward on this as quickly and cost-effectively as possible? And then it would be within your discretion to see if there's a way to reduce those costs either by having our architects sign off on drawings from elsewhere or other services that might be donated, is that?
We would have to authorize a certain amount, I think. And so we would, we would need to hear what an estimate for the installation and flooring would be on this. Because that would be on top of any cost that is on that, right, that is on that slide. But it could be, and I'm just making this up, it could say, okay, we, you know, my guess is it's going to be ten to twelve thousand dollars to do it, and I have no idea. But let's just say that that was a real number, then it could be an authorization of up to twenty-five thousand for the project.
You can say not to exceed.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed twenty-five thousand or whatever that is. And then if it does, if it goes beyond that, then you have to come back to the board for additional approval.
Right.
So that would be a way to do it where we do have an associated specific cost to the resolution.
Right.
And I think we should do that tonight.
I agree.
Can you make a motion?
Well, I think we want to hear from the rest of the board. I don't want to, I don't want to dump the conversation. I think it's important to hear from everybody else.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I mean, I saw the presentation, it seemed something very meaningful for the school and the community. And I think it's a great thing, and we should encourage it initially, it's not based.
I, I agree. I think on the, on the one hand, I think it's a great project. And I wish, I wish we could just do it all with volunteers and not have these costs. Obviously, that's not an option for us. Given our, our budget season this spring, I want to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, there were many members of the public that came in and spoke about, you know, being smart about our budget and cost-sensitive. So I don't want to, just because we think this is a great idea, to just, you know, just, just spend the money without kind of some sort of thought process and, and being cognizant of the costs. I'd love to hear from everybody what your thought is in terms of how much you think we should authorize as some sort of not to exceed. Do we want to maybe ask, do you want to maybe have that conversation at a later time and ask whether the Drew and Nico's foundation has money to, or they plan on fundraising to match certain funds? Or do we want to just authorize it and hope for the best? I'd love to know what folks think.
I think we need to have a cap on that. I think, I think, I think they can, I think we should get an answer about them with the architects reviewing donated architects' plans, because there's still licensed plans. It's going to save money there.
Right, and if they say, hey, this is great, you can do that.
And so I would be, I'd say, why don't we, as a proposal, we'll start the conversation. Why don't we authorize expenditure up to five thousand? And get answers to see if we can have them review architect plans dirty dunk. Because they're paying, we're paying a drafts person to do it. And it's the same thing, we're talking very simple here. It's not, it's not complicated.
I guess I have a point of information. The actual construction, I know that he says we've got people who will all do it. Legally, we can't do that.
No.
Right? So-
Right, so there's, on top of that, there's a construction cost and a flooring cost. So that's why we could put a cap that's higher than that, that would hopefully incorporate it.
So they're donating the equipment, right?
Yes.
They can also donate materials, right? Like concrete or wood chips and everything else, yeah. They could donate that kind of stuff, right? Just not labor.
Yeah.
As long as the materials meet state requirements.
Yeah.
And the materials I've already purchased apparently do meet the requirements. So we can use the materials I've purchased so far.
Right. I'm just, I'm really hesitant because like we can't have any, like we can't have any pressure treated. Like we have to have speci-, we have to have very, very specific stuff.
Mm-hmm.
It has to be very specific. So, um, schools are very different.
They are, no, I know. So Katie, if we, if the board, well, the board was to move forward with a specific cap, what do you think that that cap should be that would most likely be able to satisfy the installation of this?
I, I feel like the, I don't, I don't know if the, if everybody really knows where the, are we, are we asking for just like phase one? Or are we looking for phase two, including the construction? Because you guys aren't getting back together again.
Correct.
Right.
I think, I think we want it installed.
Yeah. 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 I, I think if you're going out for an RFP or, or bidding, I think you're looking at twenty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm. And is there, to Jordana's point, I know that in the past several meetings we've talked about that we do have overtures in our budget that we, we're allocating to different funds. Do you feel confident that we would have that money in our budget so that it is not a pain point with the rest of our expenditures?
I think something, you know, we have to prioritize and something else will have to, something else will have to go. We'll have to find something that has to go. Because it's just, it's, it's, it's not, we have a limited budget that's going to prove by taxpayers. So something else will have to go.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have to find something else that has to go. But, you know, you're, you're the guiding force and, and, you know, this is such people's heartstrings. So I, we can, we can do that, we can roll up our sleeves.
So I will make a motion to authorize the school district to, you know, exceed amounts not, spend amounts not exceeding twelve thousand five hundred dollars to move forward with this project. That's-
Twenty-five thousand.
No, I want to do, my motion is for half the amount.
Mm-hmm.
With the hope that if our community really supports this and Drew and Nico's foundation really supports it, that they will find a way to, you know, raise money and, and we're basically trying to do it as a match.
We might be able to save costs, I don't, this is a whole even happen, but yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully it won't be a full twenty-five thousand.
I would second that motion.
Can I, can I just get this down then? So you're authorizing to move forward with exploring the next steps of the installation of the memorial outdoor fitness equipment with costs to the district not to exceed twelve thousand five hundred?
Yep.
And so your motion and Brian's second.
I think that's a great idea. And Katie can always come back to us and say, that doesn't work because we can't accept A, B, and C because of whatever reason. Maybe we can do it for less than that.
I'm comfortable with the number two, thank you for bringing it in.
Yep, my concern is that if in fact we cannot use their designs, so we have to pay our own, that it will automatically exceed what's been authorized and we don't convene again to the end of August. So I think we'll lose the project here. And I do think it belongs here.
You think it should be a bigger number?
So I think it should be a bigger number, I do. Because the reality is if, if it needed to be more for it to happen here, would you feel positively about it? From my perspective, I do. So that's why, I mean, if we had a meeting in two weeks, it might be different. But we don't have a meeting for nine weeks. So, or eight weeks. So, so I'm just worried that there's a little bit of time of the essence right now on this.
But to your point, I mean, what Jordana I think is saying is by allowing them to also do fundraising, there's going to be more community involvement for the project instead of us picking up the whole town.
Well, the thing is, they did, they did do a lot of fundraising to buy the materials. So it wasn't as if they're coming and asking us to fund the whole thing. They actually spent months and months to raise money to buy all the materials. So, and it's not that I'm not suggesting that our community wouldn't rally around donating some, it's just it's the summertime and if you want installation in the next couple of months, I don't know, and school's out. I, I just don't know if that's a successful path to expect them to be able to walk down.
What, do you have a different number, Chris, that you would?
Yeah, I would, I would authorize twenty-five thousand. Not to exceed twenty-five thousand, but it's on, on what Katie said. But I, you know, I, only because if we were going to lose it because it's fourteen thousand dollars, I think that's a missed opportunity. And I, and I know that our kids need more activities in that backyard to do besides those two hoops in the grass field.
I kind of wish that they were still here so we could find out whether, whether the fundraising also now-
What if we did that with Chris's number, with the direction to utilize every resource and make every effort to, that's a not to exceed number, but to make every effort to keep that number as low as possible by seeking out donations and donated services? Is that, is that feasible?
I think we can have donated services, is what we're hearing. You can have donated, you can have money to fund it.
They can donate money.
But that's about it, they can't donate-
I think you should vote a motion on four.
And materials, right, some, the designers are super careful. Gosh, I'm always like the really cranky old lady in the room.
No, it has to be the right materials that are state-approved, makes sense.
I want a call to motion to a vote.
Yeah, so the motion is for the expenditure of twelve thousand five hundred. And all in favor?
Right.
That's six, yes.
I was, and I voted, I'm voting only because if it went down, I was going to vote to motion to have it be a higher number. Because I fear that this is going to derail the project and it may, may derail the project.
Yeah, and I would just hope that, you know, if it does look like it's going to derail it, we can hopefully get a quorum together and find a solution and-
Would we be interested in, you know, getting a quorum together to meet, to, to, to hold it? I'd be happy to do that.
And I, I'll be the first side personally, if, you know, if they want to hold a fundraiser, I'll be there and personally donate. And hopefully, if the rest of the community wants to get behind it, we can really make it happen.
Sounds like a good thought.
Before we go into the appointments, can I just do some housekeeping and do swear in both in, President and Vice President? Can you switch back over to the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Can you switch back over to grab this slide? Anthony, hi, Jordan Sohbi.
Hi, Jordana Sohbi.
Do solemnly swear that- I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of-
Word President of the Sag Harbor Union Preschool District.
Word President of the Sag Harbor Union Preschool District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Hi, Alex Creighton.
Hi, Alex Creighton.
Do solemnly swear that-
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of-
Vice President-
Vice President.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Preschool District.
The Sag Harbor Union Preschool District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, so are we now up to section seven, appointment of officers?
Mm-hmm.
So can I get a motion to, oh, so actually, this is where we're starting our consent agenda. And we were thinking we might do this a little bit differently in that, given that there are so many of us board members, including myself, that are relatively new. I remember last year when I was elected, I was told, do you have any questions about the agenda? And I said, and I just, there were- And I said, and I just, there were so many, I didn't even know where to start. So this year looking at it, I, there's a lot more, I understand, but there's still some gaps. So, um, for each consent agenda topic area, Katie is going to give a brief introduction as to what we are approving, or delegate it to another member of the administration, so that we have a little better understanding. Even though we've all read all the documents, we sometimes don't know how they all fit together, and it's helpful to get that context.
Right, right. Um, so I'll just start out with, um, our district clerk and district substitute clerk, um, you are, you're, you're making those, those officer appointments. District clerk and the district treasurer actually work for the Board of Education, they're your employees, um, which is a great segregation of duties, um, because as a district clerk, that, um, they're working for you to provide the agendas and get those ready and answer your questions, um, and the district substitute clerk is just there, um, should the district clerk not be available. The district treasurer, it's a segregation, because they're handling the money and reporting about the money to you that's happening within the district. Um, and again, we're having a deputy should, um, should the district clerk not be available. So I think that that's, that's important for you to know. And you get a report every month from the district, um, treasurer, and if, you know, as we have questions, we can do maybe some tutorials as you go along. Um, you will get, you always get that when you go to school board training, but it's a lot, and so, um, this year we talked about breaking those out, so that you can see what, and understand a little bit better about what those reports mean and what you're, what you're looking at.
Can I get a motion to approve items, um, seven point one through seven point five?
Showrooms.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna go over here.
Are we voting?
We're gonna vote.
All that's right, man?
Yes. Okay.
Is your oversign?
Does your oversign-
Yes, your oversign should be set up to go. So your oversign is gonna do something pop up?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's it, it's, uh, you, it's all, yes.
Um, so it's unanimous, so section eight of our consent agenda, appointments of health and safety of students and staff.
Okay, yep. These are, um, these are only two of our physicians, um, we have a series of physicians that do things like, um, our school physicals and any of our, uh, referrals that we need to make. Um, you'll see, uh, a couple of more coming onto our agenda, but every school has to have school assigned physicians, and these are our school assigned physicians. Um, eight point four is a concussion management, we have, we started with a concussion policy, all school districts have to have a concussion policy. And what this does is it does baseline, um, we have a baseline testing that we do when children start the school year. We, um, look at their baseline and they take a very small test to see, um, what their response rates are, so that if they do get a head injury, we can then monitor that. Um, and we work with this Saint Charles Hospital, um, on their concussion management, um, because parents can often say, they're fine, and even their doctor can sometimes get bullied and say, they're fine. So, um, whatever-
What a child will say, I'm fine.
I'm fine, child will definitely say they're fine. So we work with, um, this, again, this baseline testing, this Think Smart Concussion Management Program, uh, through Saint Char, Charles Hospital, that, um, will release the child if they have been diagnosed with a concussion. Um, the dis, the District Dignity Act for all students is also known as our DASSA coordinating, so that there is, um, someone assigned in both buildings that, um, will handle if there's been, um, an allegation that there's been, uh, um, someone's DASSA rights have been violated, and these coordinators are the ones that it is their obligation to look into and investigate any, um, dignity for, uh, students, um, if there, if there's been a violation. Um, and then the district sexual harassment and Title Nine officers, again, this is the same, if there's any, um, any concerns about sexual harassment, they, they are obligated to do the, um, uh, the investigations for those.
Okay, okay.
Good.
Um, can I get a motion to approve items eight point one through eight point six?
Showroom.
Second.
Right, section nine of the consent agenda.
Can I just, I have, um, five yes and one abstained, your oversign.
So that's six.
That's only six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have six yes and one abstained.
Um, section nine of our consent agenda is special education actions.
And Dr. Mears and I, Dr. Carleen Mears and I are gonna do this together, she's our PPS director, we love acronyms in education, which is our pupil personnel services, and special education loves acronyms even more. So when you hear CSE, CPSE, um, throughout the year, this is, um, this is where you're looking, Carleen, do you wanna walk us through that?
Sure.
And I have a couple, I'll take the, I'll take nine point eight, and you can do, I think, the rest of them.
Okay, great, so good evening, Carleen Mears, uh, I'm Kiki S. Director. So the function of the special education actions on the consent agenda is really to establish some of the critical features, um, for the process and procedures to support free and appropriate public education for students who have special needs. Um, so we established a committee on special education, primarily what the board is doing is improving, the chairperson is your key feature, our chair folks have gone through training, five day training in the fall, all three of us, um, and also optional members on the committee on special education. Part two hundred regulation of commissioner education is really deter, excuse me, determines the committee and subcommittee makeup, and it's also determined on student need. Um, so that's the first two, is just appointing those committee on preschool special education, which is county funds, and committee on special education, which is, um, uh, district funds. Then, um, also nine point four, you're appointing parent members, and we have a list of parent members available to, um, families who are coming to committee on special education. These, these parent members have had a child with a disability and have gone through the process, um, and it just helps them with advocacy and support going through the committee on special education. We have a couple of contracts, one for contract, the consulting that difference is really bringing in, um, expertise on a specific area of disability to support staff and parents at home with a child. Um, and that's a kind of a low hour, uh, commitment. There's also a service contract, so oftentimes you'll see in special education service contracts, what's a particular program or service for students with special needs. This one's with East, uh, Eastport South Manor for one student, and that student requires a special class of an eight to one to three to two ratio, and we don't off, currently offer that here in the Sag Harbor School District. Um, and then the family service league.
Family service league, um, uh, we have guidance counselors here, which we call school counselors, we have social workers here, but we don't have licensed therapists here. So if a child's in crisis, um, this, um, they, they form like a cooperative here on the east end that can help a child that's in crisis. So this is the family service league is, uh, provides, um, a wealth of services for, um, uh, at, that's at all the school districts on the east end that participate. Um, and again, it's, uh, counseling and others, um, therapist consultants.
Thank you.
Um-
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve items nine point one through nine point eight?
Showroom.
Second.
All right, um, item ten of the consent agenda is the, are the business items.
Okay, so, um, ten point four says approve John Germain library request for a special district meeting, it's actually a vote, and the school district supports the John Germain library vote, which is, I assume why we have the inspection, um, and the election votes, right? Um, then we also have the, um, classroom treasurer's reports, so those reports come through, um, reporting on how the, uh, classrooms are fundraising and expending and the monies are coming in. Now, tax anticipation notice is lovingly called a TAN, we like to, we like to use acronyms in every part of school districts, but it's a TAN, which is a tax anticipation notice, because our funding does not come in until halfway through the year. Because, um, Southampton and East Hampton collect their tax monies, and then they start to give it back to us, starting in December through June. So we have to do an, a tax anticipation notice, like basically a loan, and that's why our Moody bond rating is so important to us, so that's our tax anticipation. So, um, which brings us to ten point eight, which is why do we have bond counsel? Those are specialized attorneys in borrowing, and they give us our advice, and they write up anything that we have to write when it comes to borrowing, and they help us borrow with our TANs and our bands. What's a band? That's a bond anticipation notice. I'm, got it all down just before I retire. Um, so a band anticipation notice is the, is the barm we do when we, we're going out for any kind of a lending. So we, we, we borrow for when we are going to be doing, um, like, construction projects or, or other types of, of, of lending, and they give us all of our, our legal information. Um, approve the bank depositors and the, uh, newspapers, this is required by law. So for example, um, for our, um, we have to have bank depositors, um, by law that are, are approved, and we have to have an official newspaper for our legal notices, our bids, um, our postings for jobs. Um, so tho, so those are our official newspapers. Uh, mileage, we have to approve every single year. Um, state department athletic process has to be very explicit, because it can be so competitive. So we have to be very explicit year after year and adopt the, um, uh, state education department's athletic process, and we have to show that we've done that. Um, asbestos compliance, designate, every school district has to have at least one person that, uh, has been through the training every single year and is in asbestos compliance, because we worry about asbestos, and we wanna make sure we're always in compliance. And so, um, that person is our facilities director. We have to, we're adopting a state wi, um, a district wide safety plan, if you look at the district wide, it's, I, it, it hangs on our website every year, it is very, very general, um, on purpose, because our, our school safety plans are very, very detailed, very specific, and those are confidential, the only ones that look at those are, um, administrators within the district, safety personnel within the district, and our safety, what we call partners. So that's the state police, it's, um, state education department, and our local law enforcement, um, that know what those plans are. The capital market advisors, again, there, there are financial advisors for our TANs and our bands, and they provide, uh, financial advisories, just what it says. Um, so they give us, they're sort of like you, when you would have a financial planner, there are school financial planners. Um, again, Cullen and Denovsky, external auditors are required by law, and we, and we obtain them through an RFP process. Um, the government accounting services, our CPA service, they help us, um, in our, in our side of closing up the books, the auditors close up the books on their side, we close up the books on our side, and we have a CPA that supports that, that. Um, approve Bridgehampton Union Free School District, that's the summer transport, we, we do take care of the summer transport for the Bridgehampton students. Um, we have, uh, ten, ten nineteen is a shared service agreement, um, we are Southampton, takes care of all our mechanical services for, um, for our buses. We don't have a mechanic of our own, they do mechanical services for us. Um, ten point twenty, uh, the Southampton Union Free is a municipal agreement for transportation for our fuel. It would, it would be cost prohibitive for us to buy, um, fuel at the local, you know, gas station. So we've, uh, created a shared service where we purchase our fuel, um, through a shared services agreement, um, which is very cost effective. Um, and we do that through Sa, again, through Southampton School District. Um, Wayne Scott, that's a shared services agreement, um, and, uh, same with, uh, it's ten point twenty-two, but that's a shared services agreement, but for summer only. And then the Rudishan Trust, you had a presentation on that at our last board meeting for the summer art program. And that is, um, you also have a, uh, a, that's a sizable check to cover all the costs of the Rudishan art. Okay.
I realize I should have asked for all of these if, um, anyone has any questions, because since they were consent agenda items, we don't have discussion.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, there were, I know there were some questions that came in, and then, you know, we proposed keeping them in consent agenda, but, uh, providing the opportunity to ask questions. So does anyone have any questions about any of this so far that has been in the consent agenda?
I just, I may be wrong, did, did you do the workers' compensation reserve fund?
Did we get to that, did I skip it?
I think I missed it.
Okay. Oh, I did, where is it, oh, tell me which number it is.
Well, it might be a different number, I'll bring it down, ten point, uh, twelve.
It isn't.
You guys tend to look at the-
We went-
You're looking at your-
I have an old one, I have an old one, I have an old copy. Um, the workers' compensation, that should have been on the last board meeting, that's again, opening up a placeholder for when the auditors close our books. So that is, um, that, the, that, what, that should we have funds at the end of the school, at the, when the auditors close up the books, that's one of the places funds should go, funds should go there.
But that requires board approval to actually transfer the funds into that, correct?
Right, right, and you'll see that-
So this doesn't, this doesn't transfer any funds, it gives the opportunity to, if the board so decides and we have the funds.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it just, it just holds a place. It should have been bundled with, with the other ones, yeah.
I just wanted to mention a big thank you to the Rudishan Trust for donating over twenty-one thousand dollars. The summer programs are phenomenal, and I really encourage parents and students to, to review what that opportunity is and, and hopefully partake.
And so my numbers are different, I should, sorry about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, get a motion to approve, second, is ten point one through ten point twenty-six.
Okay, I have, um, six yes, and Susan Shaffer abstained.
I abstained due to the item of ten point nine, just letting you know, okay? So then.
Okay. Um, moving on to consent agenda, section eleven, authorizations.
Okay, I'll run through these, um, so, they may be out of order, so, um, I, I didn't update, I didn't, um, refresh.
Order's actually up on this.
Oh, good, okay. So, uh, designate the superintendent and school business administrator, again, this, by law, we have to have segregation of duties, so that two different people, um, are looking at the certification of payroll away from the payroll officer that develops that. So each of, each, we're designated to certify the payroll as two separate eyes. Um, authorization of superintendent business administrator to invest district monies, again, so three different entities are looking at how the monies are, 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 are getting placed. Um, superintendent to approve conference and attendance requests, um, so that, there's actually more eyes that, that are on conference requests, it actually is, is three sets, so, um, it goes from the, from the person, and then now it gets looked at by, if they have, um, the lead teacher, and then it goes to the principal, and then I'm the final one to approve conference requests. Um, authorization if East Hampton and Southampton tax receivers and supervisors to invest tax, uh, they, so they take our money and they hold it for a period of time prior to this, till they, while they, while they're collecting, um, before they, they provide, provide it back to the district. Um, so authorize superintendent to approve budget transfers, um, but the, the board looks at those at every business meeting, with the exception of when they lift it at the very end of the year, because monies have to, but, be moved around. But again, you will look at those, the auditors will provide the board with those once the books are, are closed. Um, designate tris, district treasurer to sign all district and payroll checks, designate the purchasing agent and deputy, uh, purchasing agent, um, so that we have, again, segregation of duties.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items eleven point one through eleven point eight?
Showroom.
Second.
I didn't do bonding personnel, bonding personnel is just that should anybody, um, either make a financial mistake, or should do something that's, that's illegal, um, that is bonded, that's the, that the school district is, um, is, is protected. Go back and take those superintendent tests now.
That's unanimous, that one's right. Um, and so you just mentioned bonding and personnel, so that's twelve, um, it sounds like that's the bonding of every single-
Yes.
So we don't need to go through each one.
You don't, yeah, no, and that's, that's insurance for the district, there's, so they have protection against financial liability.
So- Any questions about, um, bonding and personnel? All right, can I get a motion to approve, just twelve, like, twelve point seven?
Move.
I like it.
Diana.
I'll play your game, Brian.
Same item.
Next time I'm gonna move for something- Next time I'm gonna move for something completely different, one of you is gonna be caught.
I can move to Alaska.
Yeah. Okay, um.
These will be in the beginning.
Yes. Moving on to section thirteen of our agenda, uh, Board of Education actions and policies. Uh, the first one is re-adopting all policies, administrative regulations, code of ethics and code of conduct in effect during the previous year. Can I get a motion to approve item thirteen point one?
Second.
Any discussion? Moving on to thirteen point two, approval of the second reading of the revised policy sixty-one ten, code of ethics for all district personnel.
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for the policy committee. That's unanimous.
Item thirteen point three, approval of the second reading of the revised policy seventy-one thirty-two, non-resident students. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is not approving the policy, it's approving the second reading?
The second reading, yeah. Also, um, note that in here, I think it's still in here, it was last time, there's, um, is there the revised resolution for, yeah. There's, um, just as the second attachment, just for awareness. There's, it's not just the policy itself, but as part of that, when we do vote on it, there's also a revised resolution regarding, um, private payment.
Two seconds.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear any discussion, so I was going to-
Oh, I thought I said any discussion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, 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 I just continue to share that I'm, I, I fear that this policy does not have enough teeth in it. And that there are other districts that have policies that have better teeth and I'm, I, I don't know if this is gonna end up providing with the district. I approve the second reading.
Section M. Moving to section fourteen, personnel actions. Um, this is another consent agenda section, yes?
What number were we up to?
Section fourteen.
Personnel actions.
Uh, I mean, this is not part of the reorg session, so you don't need to go through all of this. But, um, can I get a motion to approve items fourteen point one through fourteen point sixteen? Any discussion? Sorry, oh, no, just a discussion. All right, section fifteen, action items.
Uh, yeah. Then I think we have somebody in the crowd I'd like to recognize, Deanna. Welcome, as our next elementary music teacher.
All right, so on to action items. Um, item fifteen point one, appointing Beth Crosby Klugman as school nurse. Can I get a motion to approve item fifteen point one?
Disclose that that's my work and I abstain.
Oh, really?
Uh, so any discussion other than what?
No, I, I haven't. I'm only just a second. There was no discussion. Okay, that's six, yes, and, um, Alex abstaining.
Congrats to Beth.
Congrats.
Um, item fifteen point two, appoint internal auditor. Can I get, um, motion for that?
Some more.
Second. Any discussion?
Um, no more.
Yes, I can.
That's unanimous.
Can I get a motion to approve item fifteen point three, approval of authorization to sign health and welfare contracts?
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, was that Deanna?
And Brian, right?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Katie, can, can you in two sentences just describe what health and welfare contracts are?
Sure. So if a student is privately placed, um, in a parochial or, um, or a pri- a pri- it's usually private or parochial school. But for s- safety sake, we put in every potential school district.
Right, because we don't know what might lead it to-
Right. Um, but it, in general, it's the, it's the, uh, private and parochial school placements. Um, they, we have to pay for their transport and we have to pay for their, um, their health services. So at any time, they can send us a bill throughout the year and we have to pay it. So you're authorizing us to pay, to let, let us pay that. And that's why sometimes you'll see them come in randomly through the year because you, it's that Jimmy Buffett line, you say it, we'll pay it. They, they're, we can't force them to be on any kind of schedule. They just send it because that's the law. So it's like, it's like we have to transport them and we have to pay this bill. So we just kind of put everything in there, kind of like regu- it's all in there. We just put every school district in there so that we, we have the authorization to pay that.
Okay, that's unanimous. Can I get a motion to ap- approve item fifteen point four, appoint Mary Adamcheck, uh, some website maintenance. And I, did I pronounce her last name correctly?
Adamcheck, yeah.
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had remembered some questions on this and so we suggested that we go into exec to get them addressed.
Okay, uh, did you wanna move to go into exec?
Well, that was, that was the response I got when I emailed, so I moved to go into exec.
Second.
Do you want to move this depending, uh, depending the MOs?
Um, if we're going to exec time, why don't we do that? Yeah, it'd be more efficient. Thank you. Good idea.
So we'll just get in there right now. Yeah, can you just move it with the MOs?
Let me just step back to us.
Can I get a motion to approve, oh, sorry, you need to, oh, can I get a motion to approve item fifteen point five, adopt district board of education calendar?
Some more.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? I have some, but. Um, I just put together a draft of kind of the way, uh, at the last meeting, I, um, I had mentioned, you know, maybe we wanna reorganize how we plan our meetings in terms of maybe having meeting, hopefully smarter, more efficient. Um, and so I put together a draft of how I think maybe we could approach it. Um, so I put this together and, um, we'd love everyone to take a look, you know, when. Here, why don't I pass this? You've got a lot of talent, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for the line of. Um, and the idea would be to have a business meeting once a month where for that business meeting, we would aim to get the agenda out sooner so that there's more time for everybody to digest it and ask questions. The idea is that right now, um, because we meet on Monday nights and the agenda goes public on Fridays. It only leaves the weekend, um, to really answer any questions that come in from the public, um, which is not ideal for anyone. So if we were to go forward with, um, having a business meeting once a month, the goal from my perspective would be to have the agenda set earlier and go, the board gets their copy earlier, the public gets their copy earlier so that we can all be in, um, a better shape before the weekend, before the meeting. Um, I obviously realize everyone's looking at this for the first time right now. Um, I would love to know, especially from administrators, whether you guys think you can actually get items in earlier? Like, do you, is that feasible or do you need the, do you need to be able to add things more last minute to agendas and?
You wanna talk first, Jeff? Do you want to talk first? I think sometimes things come up last minute and it's sometimes hard to appoint people out here because they don't wanna commute this far. Um, so finding people sometimes, like for appointments and personnel, that has to be last minute sometimes just because we wanna get the best candidate. And we do wait to the last minute because sometimes they do come in through references and such. Um, that would be my personal. Like, I mean, sometimes we have to appoint late, like reactivate, like, what is it? Sorry, I'm not thinking the right word. But like, we have to do it after the fact just because of that. And that does sometimes happen, but we understand that that's not best practices.
So with regard to, um, special education committee recommendations, um, by regulation, if the board does not, I can't get those recommendations in and I need to start services. I don't delay the service to the students with special needs. I need to implement those. So if there's a question on a recommendation, then I'd have to go back and we'd have to kind of figure that out. But, so for me, the committee, uh, on special education recommendations can be implemented before board approval. As a matter of fact, I'm required to do that, but I want the board to be aware that that would be what would happen if we, if I could, if I had to get them in at a certain time.
Um, anyone, anyone wanna weigh in on?
Oh, wait. Was it, did everyone, were you gonna say something?
I would just say that the majority of, the majority of the issues, we comply with the request. As long as the understanding is that there are gonna be exceptions to the rule.
What about the, um, so I think that goes for the getting the agenda out sooner, but what about the frequency of having the business meeting?
We only have one business meeting in a month now.
Yeah, the difference is, and educate, I mean, if we look at our agenda for the educational meetings, there are business items on almost every single one. With the adoption of this approach, which theoretically I think makes a lot of sense, I just don't know if we could implement it to the letter of this. This is now, for instance, there are months where, there are months where we're just having one business meeting, you have to wait a month to do any business item. So I think that's the pressure test, because now even though we only have one business meeting, most of our educational meetings, there are business items. Because stuff happens, right? In between thirty days, you gotta get someone approved so they can start working. So I, I think that's the bigger question on the schedule.
I, I just think this is an excellent idea and I think it's a, just a smarter, more effective way for us to meet. It's, it's the same amount of meetings, um, but it's by having the, the business meeting once a month and then a workshop once a month. We have these things that come up throughout the year, the budget process, I think there was a sense in the community from all of us that, you know, that we could have had more time on a lot of those things and had more time for robust discussion of different things. We're gonna be hiring a new superintendent. And so this is a way for us to have time to, to have those workshops and have discussions and then still do the business. And I think it also just gives us the flexibility. Things are gonna just come up all the time and we're gonna already have this extra meeting built in where if we need to review something, if we need to approve something, the time is there. So I, I think this is a great idea and it's worth, I think it's worth trying and, you know, we could always, um, decide, we don't like it, switch back. But I, I think it's, it's a great idea.
Or the what ifs, I would just say that if you wanna put in something for us, like if something has to be put on, it do, like, we'll obviously email the superintendent, Katie, now, and then she'll let you guys know.
So, so in, legally, the school boards have, have to meet four times a year. So you have like, um, the school districts that are rural or, you know, they, they're, they're, for whatever reason, it's difficult for them to have, uh, frequent meetings. You can resolve so the superintendent can appoint prior to a board meeting. Um, I would never recommend that for something as important as a teacher because you, I always say to a teacher, don't assume you're, you have the job until the board has authorized it. But if it's like a bus monitor and they're fingerprinted and you, you know, you have, you know, or if it's, um, for, you know, some of the other positions, um, that, that the board give the superintendent authorization to, to appoint. And so that's where, that's kind of, that's the breaking point is a lot of times those critical positions you don't want left open that you wanna fill. Like, you know, s- when you're down a custodian, you're down a bus driver, you're down a bus monitor and it's for a special education position and you know you've got the person, then, you know, those, those are important. You know, you wanna wait when it comes to, if, if the administrator or the teacher that's gonna leave a job, you wanna wait so they know they have the board approval, you know, before they move another job. So that's just something to think about, so.
And that draft resolution is in our, um, agenda in terms of if we want to authorize, um, a resolution where there could be a provisional appointment subject to border, board approval at a later time.
I love that idea.
Um, I, I really like the idea of having more workshops. We used to have more workshops and I think just by the, the nature of how they're structured, you get more engagement from the community. Um, it's, it's hard to respond just off the, off the cuff on this, but when I, when I look at this, um, I just have to think we have to be thoughtful. A couple of these are exec session kind of meetings. So it would, if this is the same number of public meetings we've had in the past, it means that we're gonna, I mean, meetings, we'll have less pub, meetings in public, right? For instance, a superintendent evaluation, the board self-evaluation, those are exec sessions. So I, you know, I, I think we have to be thoughtful about saying we're gonna have less dialogue with the public. Um, and secondly, unless we're supplementing this, this shows three budget workshops, I think. Um, and it concerns me that we, that we will be able to have enough time in three budget workshops because we had more than that this year and we were at times really rushed. So, um, I, I would, I, I think we need to reflect on that and check with, I think, the administrators to see if they feel like that's an appropriate calendar. Um, and then the last thing I would just say is that I really have enjoyed and we didn't do an, I, I would have liked to have seen more of this year, this, this year. Um, but the times when we have educational meetings and we have presentations where we hear from both students, uh, administrators and our instructors about some of the educational programs. And looking at this list, it seems like there's very little of that. Um, there's a lot, there's business meetings, budget workshops, and in the beginning, there's a couple of workshops that for the most part are not curricular in nature. So, um, I'm worried that moving to this specifically, uh, conceptually I'm on board, but this specific list will have even less engagement and public dialogue about education. And, and I think that's, we wanna increase that, not decrease it. So, um, I would have, you know, ask us just to be thoughtful about that. And I do think during the goal session, the goal meetings, when we set our goals, some of that might feed into what, some of the workshops you wanna have. Let's say, and I'm making this up, a goal is to have some type of new educational program. Maybe we wanna have a workshop around that. Or it's been years since we visited our, um, foreign language program. We had a workshop about that years ago. So there may be some things that come out of that goal setting that we say, you know what, that's really rich to have a, a, a workshop conversation, so.
Um, I, I actually respectfully disagree with some of the points, um, made. Uh, we have been doing, um, the budget workshop ahead of meetings and only giving ourselves an hour, an hour and a half to do so. Here, we've had a whole night dedicated to it, so we'd end up having actually more time to discuss, um, the budget in longer chunks. Um, so I think that'll end up working out in our favor. Um, and as far as the presentations, I mean, tonight's a business meeting and we got a presentation on the diversity and inclusion. So that piece I'm not worried about. Um, I like the idea of having separate nights that are, um, set aside for workshops that'll include actually more dialogue. So I, I actually don't think that, you know, oh, we'll be doing more exec and so we'll get less engagement from the public. I think quite the opposite with all of these workshops here. We've, in my five years on the board, we've never had this many workshops. So, um, I think this is a fabulous step in the right direction and I support it a hundred percent.
Anyone else wanna weigh in on?
I think it's gonna be. I think we should give it a try.
I think we should give it a try. I like it too. I do like that, you know, um I heard what Chris said and I heard what um Diana said. I think that the, the budget workshops, if we're concerned about that, maybe reaching out to the public, letting them know that this is when they are, come on, come, come show your face, sit in front of us, talk to us. Because I think we get a lot more and we see a lot more um from those people sitting here as opposed to them sitting behind their computers. So um I think if that's proactive, I think that um, you know, in doing this, there'll be a lot more, a lot more and less on the vote of you, so you have to fully support it as well, as far as making these agendas and getting it and doing things like that and making sure that we have all the information way ahead of time. That's all. And I support that you can both do that.
Um, so I guess I, I would move to a, approve the district board of education calendar with those dates with the, the goal, not the requirement, but the goal of trying to kind of have one business meeting a month along this cadence and, but it being a goal and not a hard and fast goal. Um and we see how it goes and we can reassess it. And also um move to authorize that resolution that would be, allow um the superintendent to provisionally appoint employees as needed, subject to further board approval.
Do you wanna do those two motions separately and we'll call the first two a vote and then the second?
Sure. Um so.
I think the first one was already on the floor.
So I, I have uh Diana motioned and Brian seconded um Diana's.
Can I ask, uh, just a point of clarification about the summer meetings? Um in the, in, in, I don't know, past four or five years at least, there's always been two meetings in August and I went and looked back at the agendas and they're stock full of approvals. So um and usually there's one earlier in August and one later in August because they want personnel to start. Uh, you know, teachers is an example. They wanna be able to, to confirm that teachers are actually hired. So um and so it's always, that's, that's why it happens to be a month. Some months you can say, okay, we can get away with one, but August we seem to do a lot of hiring and we have a lot of open positions. So I, I just, you know, wanted to check, you know, pressure test that with the administrators. Do you think that there's gonna be any issue if the next time the board's gonna be able to, you know, we're gonna be able to convene publicly to do this? Um, I mean, there may be one or two off, but we don't wanna set a scenario where, where there's a lot of people we're approving ad hoc because we don't have the right meeting structure. The next time we're having a public board meeting, um where we would be doing that is August twenty sixth. Is that, you know, would, would that be, would that be enough time and early enough for you?
I think the August twenty sixth meeting is not all that problematic.
So it's two weeks.
Uh, and you'll probably have about ninety percent of the appointments for co-curricular activities at that point.
Okay.
What I said before is pertinent, that you will, you will have some um situations that arise where this could become problematic, but it'll be, you'll have the train, as long as you have that knowledge going in, I think, okay.
Yeah, I just wanna add, I think the other thing I like about this, it just gives us all this built-in flexibility if all of a sudden we do need to have an extra meeting for something where there's already a date there. Um so I think that's one line. Okay, so we're voting now.
Do you want me to add as presented? So it says be it resolved by the Board of Education, SacHarbor, and the Free School District to adopt the two thousand nineteen twenty Board of Education Meeting School Calendar as presented. Do you want?
Yeah, I think with Jordana's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And is it with all these topics? 'Cause for instance, on September ninth, you have superintendent search, but it says maybe communications, special ed. So are some of these topics flexible, but these are the dates?
That was the idea. Yeah, the topics would be flexible and please weigh in on ideas. I think these were just kind of things that I knew that, uh, you know.
Okay. 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 Got it. Percolated up?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So we're approving as Jordana presented it?
Mm-hmm.
We're voting as Jordana presented.
Okay, that's unanimous.
All right, and I can get a motion to approve the resolution um that's included the text in item fifteen point five, which um, should I, should I read it out loud or?
Mm-hmm, sure. Okay.
So whereas the Board of Education on SacHarbor, the Free School District has a legal authority to contract with and employ teachers, administrators, and other necessary staff, whereas the board recognizes from time to time, it may be prudent to adopt, uh, to appoint a teacher, administrator, or other staff member provisionally before it has had the opportunity to meet and make a decision on the proposed employee. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent of schools to provisionally appoint well-qualified teachers, administrators, and staff until it has had the opportunity to meet and make a decision on a proposed employee, provided that the board makes a final decision on the provisional appointment within thirty days. The board's failure to act within thirty days will make the provisional appointment null and void. Right, Katie, you, you recommended that we don't do this with teachers, right?
Uh, I think I would keep the, have the resolution stand, but um what I would say to a teacher is, don't leave your job until you've been board approved.
So you're not gonna provisionally um hire them and have them start working yet? You would wait for them to start working?
I would wait, I, I would recommend to them, don't leave your job until you're board approved.
Okay. And, and I, the only thing I was just taking out of here is administrators? You know, we have a small administrative team and, and I don't know if we wanna have them be hired before the board is, is having a conversation about that and approves it. Um.
So you're suggesting we amend the resolution to take out teachers and administrators?
Not teachers because what we're hearing from the superintendent is she wouldn't have them start yet.
She's gonna tell you, right.
Okay.
Um, 'cause you wouldn't, I, I don't think we would wanna have someone be teaching for a month before the board approves that they're employed. Um, but we're hearing that that's not the issue with us, which makes sense. But with the administrators, I'm just suggesting that.
I think that's fair.
Uh, if you're ready.
So I would second that with Chris's agreement, or make the motion. That wasn't a motion, Chris, sorry.
I make a motion.
And, hold on, second that.
A second and a motion. We should have a little song kicking on the music.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So Chris has moved to amend the motion to remove the amendment.
We have to vote on the amendment.
Is there any downside to doing it?
No, the administrators, no, I would agree. I wouldn't. 'Cause I'm not gonna be here anymore and the next person, I wouldn't have to hire any administrators without you guys knowing about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause you're leaving the teacher part in.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think that's really important because sometimes you have that moment. Yeah.
Yes.
Well, there was no motion, so do you want me to?
I make a motion to amend the most, the resolution to remove the word administrator, but keep the rest intact.
And then Brian seconded it.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need us to do that by hand?
No, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
It's gonna jump down. Okay, it's open to vote.
Thank you.
Jumping down there now. I'm just waiting on whoever else. Okay, that's unanimous.
All right, so um items fifteen point six and fifteen point seven, I'm just gonna recommend that a table, I'm gonna be able to have the exec about them.
I'm keeping them.
I'm sorry, is it the fifteen?
And.
Fifteen six. Fifteen point four and fifteen point seven?
Fifteen point four, point, fifteen point six and fifteen point seven, table until um
The end of the meeting.
The end of the meeting, so that we can.
Sure.
Do we need to vote on that or is it?
No.
But does that mean we're gonna go into exec, everyone leaves and then we come out and no one's here and we're voting on it?
Yeah. And they can stay if they want. They're welcome to stay. Or they can go home.
But you will be, hopefully, when you come out of exec, making a motion for what the MOA's salary increases will be, just.
Right. I just want to let people know that if they want, if they wanna hear the answer to that, they can wait.
Yeah. I guess the idea is, either way, anyone wants to hear the answer to it, we'll, we'll be waiting, but um
Can we?
To respect everybody else's time. All right, so items for discussion, um superintendent search update, I just um we checked in with school leadership, um which is the consulting firm we engaged to lead the superintendent search process. Um and uh I think it's probably election night, we had a public conversation about choosing different timelines. There was an option A, an option B, and option B with an asterisk. Um and so we haven't really circled back um and had any kind of public update in a while. So um the, the idea is that school leadership will begin the process as soon as school opens in September by asking the school community to assist in drawing up a set of specifications for the search. Um and these specifications will speak to the background experience, skills, and leadership style that we feel is the most appropriate for the SacHarbor superintendent. And all residents, parents, school staff, and our older students will have an opportunity to provide input into this process. So it ties in with the um diversity inclusion, you know, making our statements earlier about how they would like diversity and inclusion taken into consideration. So everybody is welcome to weigh in um and is encouraged. Uh, and then once the specifications have been finally approved by the board, the schedule for the search will be finalized and candidates will be sought and interviewed using those specifications. We will be announcing the specific opportunities for participating in the speci- specification development shortly and everyone's participation is sincerely encouraged and appreciated. Um, so that's really the timeline, starting in September in earnest. Um, anyone have anything they wanna add?
The, the goal is hopefully to identify the right candidate to start in January.
Mm-hmm.
And their recommendation was, um, you know, I, I think our discussion was should we move sooner? But the summertime is like the dead zone, so they didn't recommend doing it then, particularly because if we wanna engage the community, it would be unfair to expect them to be available to be engaged in that conversation in, in July and August. So it's really, the calendar is somewhat predicated by making sure we have community engagement.
Okay. Um, all right, unfinished business. Um, so item seventeen point one is the Board of Ed self-evaluation. So we, we never had the um self eval for this past school year. Um, so the idea is from the calendar that I circulated that we would add it as part of the board retreat on July twenty ninth and invite Susan LaMontagne back for that portion of the retreat. Anyone have anything to add?
Yeah, I had received a couple of self evaluations from some folks, um but certainly not the majority of the board. So um if you guys wouldn't mind making sure that you finish that up and send it in, um all forward the ones that I have to Jordana, but if you wouldn't mind just sending again if you had it somewhere on your files, just to, um, so that she's got them all.
And yours goes, obviously, we don't expect you to evaluate yourself or the board yet.
The um, sometimes, so we're, we're looking to do the self-evaluation and the board retreat the same night, right? Um, are we gonna be having a, a moderator or an, uh, you know, some assistants from NISBA for the retreat?
Um, so, yeah, that was, you had brought that up as something that we should probably discuss. So apologies for not uh triggering that discussion
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, it's okay.
when we were talking about the calendar. So is there, are there any um thoughts, desires?
Yeah. Thoughts about that? Um, you know, I, 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 um, as several of us, you know, I've sat through it both ways. It can work both ways. Um, I do think that uh one of the benefits I've seen with a moderator is that um they can, they're impartial. So they come in and, and I think it can help with team dynamics because, first of all, everyone can participate equally versus if you have someone on the board running it, then they're not really able to engage in the same way. And secondly, you have someone with kind of a clear, fresh set of eyes who, who see this in a lot of districts, so they can bring some external information and knowledge and they kind of come prepared and with the toolkit and it's less of a burden on any board member having to do it. If you do have a um, a moderator, not a moderator, but a, um, a NISBA consultant come in, one of the nice things too is you send your evaluation to them and they pull that all together. And then they see where the pain points are and they have a whole library of kind of a toolkit that they can, that they can bring to those certain areas that would be the development opportunities for the board. So, you know, I think you can, you can tend to have a, a broader opportunity if you do have that help. And it's easier on, on, on the board. So that would be my suggestion.
I agree with Chris. I think we should bring somebody in this year just because we have so many new board members and um it's nice to hear from somebody with authority, whether something is appropriate or inappropriate. Um, and I think that as part of that, when I've done it with the um NISBA rep in the past, part of that development process was with the board president, is um, what do you see some of the issues? And then um there's a survey that went out to everybody. So um I think that if we're going to use somebody, um the leadership team can decide who that is and what that might look like, um we should probably engage that sooner rather than later to make sure they're available, first of all. Um, and then if they wanted to survey the board about anything, I think they got time to do that. That's right.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so I doubt Alex or I know anyone personally, so I would leave it to.
Didn't we have someone two years ago?
NISBA's the head of, you know, you can call the head of trainees on NISBA, see what their recommendations are.
Yeah, I, I, we can, we can certainly do that or, but if anyone has any recommendations, I think Chris, you sound like you might know people. Diana, Katie, do you have any recommendations? You know, we can definitely.
Okay, great.
That sounds good.
Um, and then um the communications model, um is item seventeen point two. That's something that we discussed briefly at our, less than, not briefly, in depth, actually, in our last meeting. Um, and I, just a discussion about where we should go now with this. We kind of didn't have time last meeting to, to decide what the next steps were, would be. Um, you'll see on the um calendar draft, uh, on September ninth, I put maybe a communications workshop so that we could get, you know, the public and other folks to weigh in and um on what potential next steps would be. But um obviously open to discussion as to what anyone wants.
Yeah, I agree. I think this particular topic, I think was the type of thing that would be perfect for a workshop because we need to hear from the administrators, we need to hear from the community, like this ultimately shouldn't be just a board decision um about what that might look like. So I think it's a perfect topic to workshop with the community, as to what, what they feel is lacking.
Anyone else?
I think workshops are a really good idea. I think the only chance we're gonna have with a workshop on September ninth is, what's the first day of school?
This is the second.
The second. So, you know, I don't know if we're like really early in the school year, it's gonna be as easy for, for folks to show up. But I do like the idea of having a workshop. And we may even have a decision that we want to survey people before the workshop. So there could be, you know, it'd be nice to have kind of a data, some data-driven decisions around, around next steps.
Uh, I think ultimately the sooner we start working on this in the school year, the better. Um, and then if, if the community feels like we need to do another survey, 'cause I know that one was done um just a few years ago and Katie hasn't, uh, shared that data, again, um I don't know if she shared it with the board or if it was just me, but um that might be.
I'd send that to the whole board.
Send it to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's four, four, five years ago.
That was, that was before I got here. That was, that was spring of two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, you got here, yeah. Yeah, so it's been a while.
Yeah. It's five years.
All right. Um, so does ha- anyone else has any thoughts on the communication model? I will just suggest that we have a workshop on it at some point in September.
That sounds good.
Okay. Um, is there any potential items not scheduled that anyone needs to add?
Um, yeah, I had um, I had a couple that we, we had talked about. One was um that since our next uh pu- uh public board meeting is gonna be at the end of August and theoretically we might be having some personnel moving into the SacHarbor Learning Center before then, before August twenty sixth to get ready for the school year, maybe we could just have a, a quick update on like where we are with that. You know, how to, are we still on track? Does it look like we're gonna be open for September? Is there anything else you wanna share with the board and public about how that's going? Just 'cause it's, I would, you know, we've got a bit of time before.
My favorite words are, we're on time, on budget.
Good.
It's my favorite thing in the world. Um, I think the only delays were in some cabinetry orders that they were concerned about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it looks like the elevator's coming in. We were worried that that was gonna be later. We, we don't need it, um but it'd be better that there be no construction when children were there, but it looks like that's, that's coming in a little bit more on time. Um, we're.
Everything looks good so far.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so it looks like the, the, the business office can move in before the school year and that, that uh pre-K will begin at the school year, I think?
Yes. I mean, the, yeah, that's, and we have a great backup plan. I can stay here if need be. I mean, we'd rather not that be the case.
Fantastic.
And once reorg was over, um. And once reorg was over, um, the, uh, business offices will start on RFP through the daycare, so.
Great. And the, um, are we having a ribbon cutting before then or will it be in September or?
You're way ahead of me.
The commu- I'm just thinking like communicate, no, but I'm just thinking because we're not going to be doing this again till the end of August, like, to, to, you know, maybe between now and then, a communication plan or an outline can be developed and we can get some word out to the public of what to expect in September, cause it's going to be here like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exciting. Thank you, that's great news.
It really is. It, the, the spaces, especially the, uh, large group construction space downstairs is, is beautiful. It's really beautiful. I think that's going to be our real resources, if you have any.
And thanks for bringing it up, Chris, because it is going to be a while since we meet again, so definitely good to have an update.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a question about the field in the back. Um, I know I've heard that, uh, the bridge golf course comes and takes a look at it, but does any of our, does any of the staff here maintain this field at all or is it only done by the bridge?
Uh, no, we, we, we cut the perimeter. They, they cut the field itself. We do the, uh, the outside edges.
Okay, so basically, um, you know, I had a few community members come up to me and ask me about the field and, you know, they hear, um, the bridge, the bridge. Um, so we, the administrators are involved in the maintenance and of the field in the back?
Yes, so, yeah, they're out there taking care of it.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
Um, can we get an update on whether there's going to be SATs given at Pearson? I know that we came up at the last meeting and there was a question about funding, but I think that date would be coming up.
Yeah, it's August twenty fourth.
Right.
And, uh, so, uh, there needs to be some coordination and being redundant because I mentioned it last time.
Right.
Um, so we posted it to the teaching unit because I called around the neighboring districts, um, for the coordinator role,
um, to see what they do and that's what they do in other districts.
So we posted it to the teaching unit and I have one response, so we're moving forward with it.
So it may and may not be able to happen this year, but.
I would say it's looking pretty good, but we should have final word, but then we.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, um, so moving on to public input two, is there anyone here who would like to speak at public input two?
I would.
Okay.
I'm even going to come up to the podium and act, act like a community member. My name is Diana Kohoff. Can you give my address?
You have three minutes.
I have three minutes. Um, as you may know, this, uh, is the beginning of my sixth and final, final year on the board and the end of my third year in the leadership role. Thank you to Alex and Jordana. Um, I'm proud of the work that we've done as a governance team and I truly believe that the board and the district is moving in the right direction. So as I step away from the leadership role, um, I'd like to give you some advice. Communicate often and stay on the same page. This is more than a one-person job and it's prone to high burnout, so lean on each other often. And know that just because one person on this governance team wants something, even if they want it really, really, really bad, it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to do it or that you should do it. Squeaky wheels may have the most voice, but they are only one vote. Squeaky wheels are not always right, nor do their views always align with the rest of the board or the school community. You must balance the desires of the quiet and content just as much as the noisy and dissatisfied. And speaking of noise, I have some advice for the full board. There are hundreds of parents that send their kids to Saugharbor. Not all of them are as indignant, distrustful and critical as a handful of people that troll the comment section on Facebook. Most of our constituents voted for us, they trust us and they're pretty happy with the school. Don't let the conspiracy theorists and the haters influence you. Some folks practice deficit thinking. The glass is not only half-empty, but it's the wrong glass and who told you you could fill it anyway? As a former quieter board member mentioned to me this weekend, all we can do is put good people in the right places and sit back and let them do their very best. Bringing out the best in those around you is a sign of a good leader. Public shaming, second guessing and constant criticism are not the tools of great leaders. Toxic negativity is contagious. I can encourage you to remove yourself from Facebook groups that engage in this type of behavior. You will save yourself a lot of anger and frustration. Besides, they are not addressing the board, they are chatting amongst themselves in a public platform. Don't give them any more voice than you would give anyone else. We do not and should not govern from Facebook. Instead, talk to each other, get information from the source and make your own decisions. Once the decision is made by the board, support it and move on, even if it doesn't go your way. I look forward to giving up my seat to yet another boardman, to another community member. Um, if we move forward in a positive and effective, efficient way, I think more people would be willing to do this job.
Diane, I just want to say, I think you are a great leader.
And with that, um, can we move to, can I get a motion to go into executive session to, um, for the purpose of discussing the employment of particular employees?
So moved.
Second. And the administrators can go home.
Unless you want to hear us vote, uh.
Most of us like to wait till after.
So, uh, can I get a motion to approve, uh, item fifteen point four, appointing Mary Adamczyk as website maintenance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Oh, any discussion, sorry.
No.
All in favor, okay. Um, so wait, who moved in?
Chris.
Chris?
Diana.
Diana? Unanimous.
Okay.
Um, can I get a motion to approve fifteen point six, school monitor salary increases in an amount equal to one dollar per hour for all of them?
So moved.
Second.
So Brian was first, who was second, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, um, can I get a motion to approve action item fifteen point seven, approve employees with terms and conditions, MOA salary increases um, in an amount equal to one dollar an hour for the non-salaried employees and two point eight percent for all of the salaried MOAs, with the one exception being the district clerk. That, that increase will be addressed in the MOA at the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.